Of the Evanston City Council will come to order. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Kelly. Councilmember Braithwaite. Councilmember Wynn. Councilmember Nusma.
Here.
Councilmember Burns.
Here.
Councilmember Suffered in. Councilmember Ravel.
Here.
Councilmember Reed.
Here.
Councilmember Harakis.
Here.
With eight members having answered the call, we have a quorum present and are prepared to do our work this evening. We'll begin with my announcements and proclamations, of which I'm afraid I have a few. First of all, tomorrow is primary election day, so thanks to all in this building who made early voting a success, thanks to all who voted early. For those of you who have not voted yet, urge you strongly to go vote in person at your polling place tomorrow between the hours of 6:00 a.m. and 7:00 p.m. Next, there has been, understandably, I think, both within this building and without it, a lot of questions about the next steps and status of the city manager search. We hope to make some progress on that as early as this evening that we could hopefully report on to the community shortly, but I also wanted to flag a town hall that we've scheduled for the evening of July 12th at 7:00 p.m. here in this building in the parasol room on the fourth floor at 7:00 p.m., two weeks from tomorrow, when I'll be in discussion with Tracy Quitraki, the executive editor of the Roundtable, to discuss both how we got here and what the next steps are in that process. Next, I have something really, really exciting. I want to recognize some folks from our community who have done really, really extraordinary things recently. Let me actually swap the order on those items to give folks a moment to gather. So let me then move ahead to the reading of a proclamation declaring July, a month which is coming astonishingly soon, Parks and Recreation Month. The proclamation being issued today goes as follows: Whereas parks and recreation programs are an integral part of communities throughout this country, including here in Evanston, Illinois; and whereas our parks and recreation are vitally important to establishing and maintaining the quality of life in our communities, ensuring the health of all citizens, and contributing to the economic and environmental well-being of a community and region. And whereas parks and recreation programs build healthy, active communities that aid in the prevention of chronic disease, provide therapeutic recreation services for those who are mentally or physically disabled; and do not solve technology problems that reign supreme over all other circumstances a human being might encounter in these dark days of June 2022. Give me one second as I navigate the extraordinarily secure login system. I promise I'm not impersonating myself. You're welcome, Internet, there it is. No explanation of where that came from, but give me one moment as I pull this back up once again. There we are. Whereas parks and recreation programs increase a community's economic prosperity through increased property values, expansion of the local tax base, increased tourism, the attraction and retention of businesses, and crime reduction; and whereas parks and recreation areas are fundamental to the environmental well-being of our community; and whereas parks and natural recreation areas improve water quality, protect groundwater, prevent flooding, improve the quality of the air we breathe, provide vegetative buffers to development, and produce habitat for wildlife; and whereas our parks and natural recreation areas ensure the ecological beauty of our community and provide a place for children and adults to connect with nature and recreate outdoors; and whereas the U.S. House of Representatives has designated July as Parks and Recreation Month, now therefore I, Daniel Biss, Mayor of the City of Evanston, do hereby proclaim July 2022 as Parks and Recreation Month in the City of Evanston, and recognize the benefits derived from Parks and Recreation Resources on this 27th day of June 2022. And on that occasion, I just want to thank our Parks and Recreation team for the remarkable work they do to ensure that our whole community benefits from these very qualities that were just described in the proclamation. This then brings me to our last item, the recognition that I alluded to a moment ago. We have with us some Illinois Special Olympians. They've joined us, and many of their families have joined us as well, on the heels of really, really exciting triumph. By the way, those who you'll see in purple shirts were medalists from the Illinois Games held this summer from June 17th through 19th in Bloomington, Illinois, Illinois State. And those who you see in red shirts are from the U.S. Games, medalists from the U.S. Special Olympics that were held in Orlando between June 4th and June 12th. And I want to call out five of those Special Olympians, five of those athletes who were successful. First of all, the Illinois Flag Football Team beat Maryland 25-20 to win a gold medal. That's right, a gold medal. And I'm not going to ask anybody not to applaud, I'm just going to ask you to get used to applauding because we're not done here. So on that gold medal-winning flag football team, please congratulate Alex Anderson, Grayson Deeny, and Riley Hoffman. Big hand for the three Evantons. But I'm not done, because we have to give a giant congratulations to Kirk Nelson, who -- just listen, guys. Bronze medal in the deadlift. Look at the number of medals around Kirk's neck. Bronze in the bench press, bronze in the deadlift, silver in the squat lift, and silver in combined. Big, big congratulations to Kirk Nelson. And finally, last but not at all least, Caroline Colleann came in second place, silver medalist, in the 100-meter run. Let's give a big hand to all of our Special Olympians, we are so proud of you.
Thank you very much, Mayor.
Great job, thank you. Great job, folks, great job. Next on our agenda is the city manager's public announcements.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of city council, no announcements tonight.
Next on our agenda is communications from the city clerk.
I wanted to echo what Mayor Biss said, that tomorrow is election day, so if you haven't already early voted, please do so tomorrow.
Good evening. Based on my handling of the technological and other technical issues up here, it could be a long night. Next on our agenda is public comment. Everyone this evening will be given three minutes to speak. We begin with those who signed up in person, to speak in person, beginning with Tina Payden.
Good evening. Again, black people, pack your bags. The new 5th Ward School, it's not for you. The remodeled Family Focus and Fleetwood, it's not for you. The new townhomes on Wesley, Jackson, Foster, and Green Bay that are proposed are not for you. Black people, you won't be here by the time these programs and homes are built. We were promised the same benefits in the 2nd Ward as they are promising you in the 5th Ward: new jobs and new affordable housing. Don't believe the hype. I live at Emerson and East Railroad. My neighborhood was low-to-mid-income black people. We lived by the city dump, the Levy Center, and the Dog Pound, which is now the farmer's market. First Chicken Shack, the black YMCA, which we could not go to the white YMCA on Grove, and the first black livery, Butler Building. The City of Evanston decided to create a research park, and black people had to go. Eminent domain appears, and my black neighbors disappeared. Thirty years later, no research park. Instead, I'm the only house left. My new neighbors are Northwestern, E2, The Reserve, Truly, The Link, The Avador, 1717 Ridge, Grand Ben, Farmer's Market, and more. Black people, black businesses, and black opportunity is gone. So while your aldermen are leading you to believe that they are anti-gentrification and anti-displacement, let their actions show you tonight by their votes. That same is not true. I'm living proof, and the only black person left on my block at Emerson and East Railroad. And white people look at me when I come out of my house, and they said, "How did you get here? What are you doing here?" It was okay when I was living by the city dump, but when my house is now called Downtown Evanston, I shouldn't be here. So if you think, black people, if you think that those people here on the dais that are voting on tonight to buy a white woman's house and promising you affordable housing with no stipulations, you're mistaken, and you're going to be just like my neighbors, not in Evanston. Black lives matter all the time, not sometimes.
Thank you. The next speaker is Jeff Masters.
Hello, my name's Jeff Masters. I live at 1918 Wesley. Our property is on the other, across the alley from us is part of the properties that you're going to talk about today, and I guess it's A9, the resolution to purchase these properties, the boarded-up properties on Emerson and Jackson. I come in favor of the city buying these properties. I think it's a good move to take. I think affordable housing is a really important piece for Evanston. I think that really to get good affordable housing, it's going to take government to come in, to have land to do that. This fits, I think, with what we'd like to see. I think the neighborhood, as you know, we've had some issues with a previous development. That was about height and really trying to keep the character of the neighborhood. I think we still feel strongly that we'd like to keep something reasonable, but we feel also that working with the city would be preferable to working with the current property owner. So from my perspective, and some of my neighbors, we definitely support this purchase.
Thank you. The next speaker is Megan Navara.
Hello, thank you for letting us speak tonight. I'm Megan Navara, I live at the 2,000 block of Darrow, and I'm here to speak in support of the proposal for purchasing the seven parcels on Jackson and Emerson, and pretty much echo a lot of what Jeff said, that I think it seems like a good idea in general, that when market forces are so strong, that we use the strongest force that we have, which is the collective power of the city government, to own and manage properties, housing, versus partnering with developers. And I think that purchasing these will be able to allow us to hold on to something that is in place already and make it better, in terms of making larger-scale developments, making the number of units for affordable housing significantly larger. And I'm interested in seeing if we are able to move forward with some kind of commission on housing for the City of Evanston. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Carla Easton.
Hi, good evening, city council. I live in the 2nd Ward of Peter Braithwaite's Ward. I'm here tonight on behalf of Bobby Burns, because he did explain to me about that property. I'm a third-generation Evanstonian. My grandmother moved here from, I think, Benton Harbor, Michigan. She had to go all the way to Mississippi to get my grandfather back then, because everybody in her hometown was related to her. That's how we used to be close-knit. But I'm just giving you a little background. I had just rode past Jackson and Emerson, and I saw that it was boarded up, I mean gated up, and I was just wondering what was happening with it. And Bobby told me that they were trying to get affordable housing there. And since the 5th Ward has been like a beacon for like the black community, my mom, Norma Easton, she used to be on the school board, and she was one of the ones that wanted the school to stay in the 5th Ward that's not there, and hopefully we'll get that STEM school going, so congratulations for you all for that. But I'm just letting you know that we do need affordable housing. There's people that work in Evanston and still want to be able to afford nice housing here in Evanston. So thank you for your time this evening. I appreciate you all, okay?
Thank you. The next speaker is Kirill Kalinchenko.
Good evening, thank you so much for your time, I really appreciate it. I'm here about the Section 959-5-20, noise is prohibited. I'm here, it's very difficult for me to be here, but it's such a mental health issue for me, so I decided I have to kind of come out and face, give some feedback. Specifically on the Section G, the radio loudspeakers and musical instruments, I would suggest not making the first paragraph so vague, just because the second sentence kind of limits, puts a time limit on the first sentence. And I would also encourage you to remove the 50-feet stipulation, just because if it's a condominium, it would be really difficult to measure the distance. So yeah, that's my public comment, thank you so much, hope you have a good evening, and yeah, thank you.
Thank you. That concludes the people who signed up on this sheet I have here. One person signed up online to speak in person, and that is Mary Keef Kelly.
Good evening, mayor and council members. My name is Mary Keef Kelly, and I am one of the two co-presidents of the League of Women Voters of Evanston. On behalf of the League, I would like to speak in favor of placing the referendum on the ballot for Evanston voters to decide whether to use ranked choice voting to elect the mayor, city clerk, and city council members, beginning with the April 2025 consolidated election. The League of Women Voters supports ranked choice voting as an alternative to plurality voting. In most elections in the United States, the candidate with the most votes wins, even if that candidate's share of votes is less than 50%. In ranked choice voting, the winner must have over 50% of the votes to win, which ensures that the majority of the voters support the winning candidate. It gives voters more choices and more power, and represents the best practice in choosing elected officials in our democracy. Another reason to support ranked choice voting for our municipal elections is that it would eliminate the need for a primary election. The primary narrows the field in each race to two candidates. With ranked choice voting, only one election would be necessary, and this would save the city money and increase voter participation. The purpose of tonight's city council vote is to determine whether to place the referendum on ranked choice voting on the ballot. The League of Women Voters asks the council to please give the voters the opportunity to vote on this issue. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. That concludes the portion of public comment of people who requested to speak in person. I want to mention the two people, Holly Hoffman and Mike Hoffman, both submitted online comments in support of the purchase of the parcels on Jackson and Emerson, and those will be forwarded to council in due course. And this then brings us to those who signed up to give public comment remotely, beginning with Eric Potters, who will be followed by Mike Vasilko, and then Leslie Williams. Is Mr. Potters there?
Yes, I'm here, can you hear me?
Go ahead.
Yes, my name is Eric Potters, I'm a fourth-generation Chicagoan, and I'm going to be speaking about the July Parks and Recreation Proclamation that you had met. I'm going to be sharing my screen, and Corporation Council, if you'd like me to actually send you these links, I'd like you to really just take a look at these. Well, I can't share my screen, it looks like somebody's disabled that. There's a case law from the state of Oregon, specifically from the Supreme Court, that I'm going to be sending to you about the Oregon Beach Bill, which is Oregon Revised Statutes And it basically states that a hotel at one point tried blocking off access to beaches. So my question for you, sir, with the 362 miles of Oregon coastline that are state-owned, what does it basically come down to with the trancing and exiting of the lake, specifically with Lighthouse Beach? As you have done, you have now been charging $3 an hour for people to park between the hours of 8:00 a.m. and 9:00 p.m. There is beach access at Lighthouse Beach between 6:00 a.m. and 8:00 a.m., and 9:00 p.m. and 11:00 p.m. And if I was able to share my screen, I'd be able to show you this case law from the state of Oregon, which went to the Supreme Court. And in 2013, there was a centennial of an important year for Oregon beaches, from 1913, which talked about the state land board selling tidelands to private upland owners. I've seen the work that's being done on the mansion that sits at Lighthouse Beach. I'm not sure where that funding is coming from, if it's privatized funding, or if it's coming from the City of Evanston, but I'm unable to share my screen for some reason. Somebody's actually blocked me from sharing my screen. But I would like you to look, like I said, at Case Law 390.605-755, because you've now forced me to actually publish what I'm about to show you, with loose dogs on the beach, which I'm going to assume are people that are actually living in the proximity of Lighthouse Beach. I'm going to FOIA all dog tags in that area, probably within a three or four-mile radius. We have footage of people actually basically letting their dogs loose on the beach, and the last person that I saw, there was numerous children on the beach, and this gentleman had a pit bull, and I said, "Why don't you just let your dog loose? Why don't you just let him loose with all these kids on the beach?" Another gentleman, early morning the other day, on Monday, I think it was, said, "Oh, the ordinance doesn't apply in the morning." So you'll be hearing a little bit more from me.
15 seconds.
That'll end my comment, Mr. Mayor, have a great day.
Thank you. The next speaker is Mike Vasilko, who will be followed by Leslie Williams, and then Betty Esther.
Thank you. So really, two points, and the first comment is really for Alden Bobby Burns, because I believe he was the one that put forth the amendment for the design and project review If you can believe what's reported on Evanston Now, this amendment will limit or even eliminate public participation and comment, and I don't know if that's true or not. I've been told that maybe that isn't 100% true, but I guess I'd like to hear from Bobby Burns to clarify that. The second item, I'd like the council, and I've written to the council, to postpone our one, the ranked choice voting. I'm asking you to do that, just because we haven't been informed by our council member Suffered in in the 6th Ward. We haven't had a council, a ward meeting, to have the people that spoke, who are supposedly experts in this, come to a ward meeting to explain it to the 6th Ward residents. I've written to council member Suffered in, I've left a phone message for council member Suffered in, and for whatever reason, he chooses not to have ward meetings. Every other ward, is my understanding, has had a meeting to discuss this very important matter of changing the way Evanston votes. And I think until all Evanston residents have the same opportunity to be educated on the matter, what the pros and cons, I think you should hold off, and until at least next meeting, or until every ward has a meeting on this subject. I'd also like to know the status of the city manager search, that's the third item, it's not on your agenda, but it hasn't been on the agenda, and I'd like to know the status of what's happening with that search. Thank you very much.
Thank you. The next speaker is Leslie Williams, who will be followed by Betty Esther, and then Priscilla Giles.
Good evening, Mayor Biss, city council, and city staff. I am Leslie Williams, the president of the Community Alliance for Better Government, and I'm commenting on Resolution 47R22, the proposed purchase of the properties at Emerson and Jackson. So the proposal is to purchase a series of boarded-up, blighted properties to be redeveloped as a mixed-income affordable housing residential development. The properties will be purchased with a blend of affordable housing funds and funds from the West Evanston TIF. And while we certainly support affordable housing, we have a lot of concerns in terms of transparency and good government in this proposal. This seems like an extremely high price for properties in terrible condition, which will have to be demolished. According to the memo, the owner is firm on sale price and believes she has other private market sales options. This sounds a lot like the old, "I have a buyer waiting, so you better make up your mind now," which is the oldest sales trick in the book. Has the city done an appraisal of the property? Has the city reached out to developers already about this property, and what did they find out? Are there actually other people interested, and what is likely to be the market value? I'm also really curious as to why the property was allowed to go to seed and become such a blight on the neighborhood. It feels as though we're rewarding an irresponsible property owner with a lucrative sale. We're also curious about why this would be using the Affordable Housing Fund. The properties are in a TIF district, and by statute, TIF funds can be used to finance affordable housing, whereas this project would drain nearly half of our Affordable Housing Fund. Also, we want to know how this project will fit in with the West Neighborhood Plan. Residents who participated in the planning process have asked for more green space, for houses with yards, parkways, and trees. They wanted it rezoned to R3 so that there wouldn't be very tall buildings. So what residential zoning is this likely to follow? And if this purchase is supposed to be a part of a broader strategy to develop affordable housing, what exactly is the plan for affordability? Is it for ownership, for rental? What percentage ratio of the homes will be affordable? And for rentals, this would have to be 60... And for rentals, this would have to be 60% of the area median income, which would be $54,000. For homes, it would have to be 80% of the median income, which would be $72,960. And if the purchase goes through, we wonder if the city would consider giving or selling the property to the Community Land Trust, which is an excellent way to create wealth-building opportunities in the form of affordable home ownership. But what's really surprising is that there's been so little in terms of community communication. Have there been any community meetings about this property and asking what residents want done with it? The memo says there will be a community engagement process after the property has been purchased, but city staff and council members should have been reaching out to residents long before bringing this purchase forward.
15 seconds.
So when can we expect community meetings for community input as to what the community would like? We feel the sale is being rushed through without enough public input and based on questionable reasoning. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Betty Esther, who will be followed by Priscilla Giles, and then Tricia Connolly.
Good evening. I wholeheartedly support what Leslie had to say. A couple of things I would like to remind the city of. We talk about affordable housing. In 2005, the fifth ward had an opportunity to develop and push affordable housing. We had meetings to say what housing you want to look at, and we said, this is the thing. But that didn't happen. What happened was that it was taken over, and then what we got was a zoning plan. There was a hearing and stuff issued for the zoning of the TIF area and the zoning for the whole west side, going from Dodge back to Green Bay Road. So we, they told it was zoning. They told everybody that it was the neighborhood was planning group. It wasn't the neighborhood plan. The neighborhood plan was from Church to Canal, from Dodge to Green Bay. And when we finished the report, the city said, no, you have to take it to RIT. That wasn't what it was supposed to be. We had to push with signatures. We sent our petition, got petition for the council to sit and have a meeting and look at that. We did have a meeting. Aldman, can't think of his name, Baptiste, said we could have a meeting in January. They called a meeting in January around New Year's. It was January the 7th, where people was away for the holiday. We did meet, and they did vote on it. But for the TIF, we wouldn't have got, it's not what they said. They told us that they couldn't do TIF money for affordable housing. We know that wasn't true.
15 seconds.
That they couldn't expand the zoning area of the TIF because people would be afraid of them don't taking their houses, and that wasn't true. You haven't used the taxpayer money to help the people that was there in the community.
Time.
We worked with an organization called the Neighborhood Capital Group that worked with TIFs out of California that could have helped and changed, and the appearance of the neighborhood would be much better than what we have now.
Thank you very much.
Due to what you're like of working with the neighborhood.
Thank you very much.
Now, you're going to do something else that is going to raise the people on the west side. Yeah, they happy that you buying it and everything and what you're doing with it, but that's not helping the people on the west side.
Thank you very much.
It's a safety. So we should stop.
Thank you, Ms. Esther.
And think about it. We do not want you to purchase that land. If the woman got a buyer in the window, let her sell it to them.
The next speaker will be Priscilla Giles, who will be followed by Tricia Connolly, and then Mary Rosinski. Is Ms. Giles in the Zoom, Luke? God, it looks like she's not available at this time. So the next speaker then will be Tricia Connolly, who will be followed by Mary Rosinski. Is Ms. Connolly in the Zoom? Ms. Connolly, can you hear us?
I can. Can you hear me?
Yep, go ahead.
Okay, great. Thanks. So I'm speaking also about the most popular thing tonight, Emerson and Jackson. I think it's great that the city is looking to actually put some money toward land, as it should, on behalf of the people of Evanston. I do have a couple of questions, things that I think we should be thinking about. One of them is, you know, at the top of my head, a few months ago, maybe a month ago, you know, there were trees cut down all over that property. And I guess what I really wonder is that, hmm, it's kind of interesting. We've cut this possible deal, and I am just kind of scratching my head, wondering how could council member Burns be so naive not to know, at the point those trees were getting chopped down, that there wasn't a deal in the works? So I just want to say that publicly. That's really concerning to me. In addition to some other questions about the property, what will you commit to as elected officials to making sure there is great canopy coverage, no matter what goes up there? And my hope is that, of course, you're listening to the neighbors within that area about what they do and don't want there, and what would be honoring people regardless of income level. And, you know, I'm talking about not luxury people, but people who, you know, any of us deserve space with green space and not being stacked up upon each other. You know, what kind of goal do we have around that? And this should be something that stays in an affordable range, and we haven't talked about what that is, but, you know, 30% to 60%, I think really is saying something, so that people can survive and live there. The last thing I'll say is, you know, as a city, we do a really bad job of community outreach. And I've seen this several times, whether it was the TIF, whether it was the police chief replacements, town halls that were barely attended. And I think we need to start seeing some metrics on what's happening to get people out. Like, what are we as a city doing to get people to come out and participate?
15 seconds.
Are we offering dinner when it's a 6:00 p.m. meeting, or some food? Are we offering childcare? There should be some metrics that you all are expected to follow to make things happen. And I will say that as far as a community meeting on this property, on this land.
Time.
That needs to happen, and you need to show up and show us what you've done to get people out to the table. Thank you.
Thank you. The final speaker will be Mary Rosinski.
Hi, thank you. I have comments on three issues. The first one is A6, that lease for a Nissan Rogue seems highly expensive. I think it's like $8.68 a month. And when I was reading the memo, I know they bought the other car, the Escape, for $20,000, and they had $48,000 in repairs. So something feels off with these numbers, or we are not treating our car as well. So, you know, I know it's in the overall scheme of a $300 million budget, plus some minus. It seems small, but every, you know, $5,000 here, $300 here over a period of time adds up. So I just don't understand. I had a Nissan at one point, and I was not paying anywhere close to that. And we can get extended leases, pay a little bit more to cover the extended mileage. So just something to think about. Second of all is P3, DAPR. The problem, I don't think DAPR should exist, actually. I think that we have a zoning code, and I think that city staff should just have, either you're meeting it or you don't, and then check off, everyone does their thing, and then sends it to the land use commission. But this sort of hybrid project that they have where they don't want public input, yet they are still going to be doing recommendations, is not good for residents, because unfortunately, there's a big precedent where city staff has been recommending projects that are so outside of any reasonable zoning. And if we don't have the ability to get in there at the beginning, we don't even know about it until it's already being recommended. I could name seven things right off the top of my head where staff has recommended things that are way outside zoning. So I don't think that our staff should be recommending. I think they should be telling us, is neat zoning, it doesn't. There is enough parking, or there's short 25 spaces, whatever that is. They should just give the facts and then let the plan commission do what they're doing, the land commission do. Yeah. The last thing I'll speak to is A9, which is the Jackson property. I spoke earlier on this, and I know I was concerned because there wasn't an appraisal in the packet. And then I was told, well, you can FOIA the packet, you can FOIA the appraisal. But that should have been in the packet for people. Why do we have to FOIA information, again, that deals with the money that our taxpayers are spending? So I feel like that should be put on the packet, put available right now without me having to go FOIA it. But the point of the matter is, is that property was on the market in 2005, I mean, 2021, for $1,005,000. So just because the appraisal, I'd like to see the comps that the appraisal came up with for.
15 seconds.
Okay, that should be what it is. I think our residents deserve it, and just because someone says it's worth $1,675,000 doesn't mean it's so. Interest rates have gone up over a percent to 2% in some cases for that. Every percent reduces buyer power by 11%. So I think we need to be looking at this and not just spending taxpayer dollar.
Time.
Without regard. Thank you so much.
Thank you. That concludes this evening's public comment. This brings us to the consent agenda. Are there any items that members would like to see removed from the consent agenda?
A9.
A9.
P4.
And P4, right.
A3.
A7.
Is that A7, council member?
Yes.
Okay.
A10.
A10. So this time I have A3, A7, A9, A10, P4, and H2.
R1.
H1.
No.
H1 as well.
All right. So I have A3, A7, A9, A10, P4, H1, H2, and R1. Any further additions?
Actually, let me, instead of pulling off A7, for the same reason, instead of that, pull off A8.
So A7 is back on the consent?
Back on A8.
All right. So let me just read this out loud again. The updated running total is A3, A8, A9, A10, P4, H1, H2, and R1.
Can you please add A7 back?
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. Didn't you think about that?
This has been dizzying up here.
Mayor Bis, is A6 on there?
Nope.
I think I meant A6, not A3. Did I say A3?
Said A3.
I meant A6.
Okay. So then, just to reiterate, A3 is back on the consent agenda. So the removal list, which is now nine items, is A6 through 10, so A6, A7, A8, A9, A10, P4, H1 and 2, and R1. Is there anything else going once, going twice?
A11.
Seriously?
I'm sorry, but it's like the fastest thing.
All right, A11.
I was going to leave it on consent, and prior to consent, just make the announcement about the amendment.
That's fine.
All right. So A11 is back on the consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor, as a point of information, my blinky light isn't working, so.
Oh, okay.
I'll do this.
Cool. I will do my best to notice that. And the less I notice, the more, you know, dramatic your gesticulations ought to be. Have a good evening. So before we do a vote then, council member, do you want to state what you were going to state about A11?
Yeah, so A11, I guess, will remain on the consent agenda. It passed out of committee with an amendment. So an ordinance 30-0-22 has been amended, deleting the $200 fee for V plates and replacing that with a $25 fee for all vehicles up to, including 8,000 pounds, regardless of the license plate type. That would include passenger FP and B plates.
Great. No, that's already got done. He's just informing folks that what will be voted on in A11 is different than what appears in the packet because of the amendment that already passed. So would someone like to make a motion on the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second. So council member Braithwaite moves passage of the consent agenda except for items A6, A7, A8, A9, A10, P4, H1, H2, and R3. Council member Reed seconds. Is there any discussion?
P2 is tabled in committee.
Oops. Council member Braithwaite withdraws his motion and reinstates a motion that also removes P2 from the consent agenda because it was tabled in committee and is not eligible for a vote on the floor tonight.
Okay.
Thank you for that telepathic procedural maneuver, council member.
P2 was held in committee, yes.
But P4 was pulled off anyhow by someone who wants to discuss it. So just for those of you keeping score, the items that have been removed are now, there's now one more, so it's A6, A7, A8, A9, A10, P2, P4, H1, H2, and R1. That was a motion made by council member Braithwaite, second by council member Reed. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, with the clerk, please call the roll. Council member Kelly?
Aye.
Council member Braithwaite?
Aye.
Council member Nguyen?
Aye.
Council member Nusma?
Aye.
Council member Burns?
Aye.
Council member Saffredin?
Aye.
Council member Revel?
Aye.
Council member Reed?
Aye.
Council member Harokarith?
Aye.
With nine voting in favor and none voting against, the consent agenda passes, and we have left now the remaining 10 items. And so I'm going to ask council member Nusma if he would like to make a motion on item A6.
Mr. Mayor, I move item A6, lease to own a 2022 Nissan Rogue for the parking division from the auto barn.
Second.
Council member Nusma moves item A6, I believe. Council member Reed seconded, is that right? Is there any discussion? Council member Kelly?
I just had one question, just for clarification from my own understanding, just to follow up on what Ms. Rosinski said. So I'm just saying $48,000 in repairs on a single vehicle, correct?
Mr. Mayor, city clerk, a member of the council, look to Tara, I'm filling right now for the facilities and fleet manager. Yes, long story short, yes, this is the number which we spent for this car for nine years because we only don't charge the price of the parts, but also how much mechanics spend hours working on the vehicle. So when we log in as a telemetrics, we mark how many hours, how many outside vendor visit. This car is equipped with the license recognition software. It's also cost to install on this vehicle. So altogether, this vehicle cost us $40,000 plus in the nine years of being in service.
Okay, and is this, this would be relatively standard? I'm just trying to have an idea, so.
Yes, this is according, because fleet management have the standards which you have to follow, like recording all the repairs and the hours which we spend on the vehicle. have to follow, like recording all the repairs and the hours which we spend on the vehicle.
Okay, thank you.
And I just want to clarify, this is the lease to own. So I know there was a question about $800 per month because we will be owning the vehicle after three years. Leases who are have to give up after three years are cheaper, but this will be our vehicle.
Got it. Thank you very much.
Welcome.
Council member Nusma, whose light has seen a miraculous recovery, followed by Reed.
That was just a light test. It automatically started working on the town.
All right, it passed. In that case, council member Reed.
Oh, okay. Thank you, Lucas, for that. Well wishes to or to Mr. Cholik. If he's not here and he didn't give us a call, he must either be on vacation or sick. And so whatever it is, I'm hoping that he's feeling well.
Excuse me, I'm sorry. I was doing.
Oh, it wasn't to you. I was just sending my well wishes to Mr. To Sean.
Oh, he's on vacation right now.
He's on vacation, so enjoy your vacation. We usually get a call from Sean about this and breaks down everything. Surprised to see something on the agenda where he didn't, so I forget he must be on vacation. So thank you for the answer.
Thank you.
Seeing no further discussion, would the clerk please call the roll on item A6? Council member Kelly.
Aye.
Council member Braithwaite.
Aye.
Council member Nguyen.
Aye.
Council member Nusma.
Aye.
Council member Burns.
Aye.
Council member Saffronin.
Aye.
Council member Revelle.
Aye.
Council member Reed.
Aye.
Council member Harakariz.
Aye.
With nine voting in favor and none voting against, item A6 passes. Council member Nusma, would you like to make a motion on item A7?
Mr. Mayor, I move item A7, approval of a sole source partnership and services agreement with Northwestern University to design a participatory budgeting process.
Second.
Council member Nusma moves item A7. Council member Nguyen seconds. Is there any discussion? Council member Reed.
Yeah, I just want to say they're not here anymore, but we had our partners from Northwestern, Professor Easterday and his crew here earlier. We had Matthew Orin, who's the staffer, the participatory budgeting committee here earlier. So I want to say thank you to them for all of their work to get us to this point. This is in a result of the city of Evanston contributing over $3 million toward participatory budgeting. This will be one of the largest participatory budgeting experiments in America. And so I'm really proud of this body for taking this step. And this is the first step. We're going to work with Northwestern as a partner to do outreach. A8, which we don't need to talk about, I guess, since it's, we'll also hire two seasonal staff folks to help alleviate some of the pressures that this may, the burden that this may place on staff. And, you know, for residents that are interested in getting involved, you can reach out, start reaching out. The next PB committee meeting will start to decide what the steering committee process looks like. And what's great about this process is that the voters of Evanston, the residents of Evanston, will have an opportunity to directly decide how over $3 million is spent, $3 million in ARPA funds are spent, and will directly vote on those funds as opposed to the council voting on those funds. And so this is a really great experiment for the city and looking forward to it.
Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, would the clerk please call the roll? Council member Kelly.
Aye.
Council member Braithwaite.
Aye, abstain.
Council member Nguyen.
Aye.
Council member Nusma.
Aye.
Council member Burns.
Aye.
Aye.
Council member Saffronin.
Aye.
Council member Revelle.
Aye.
Council member Reed.
Aye.
Council member Harakariz.
Aye, abstain.
With seven voting in favor and two abstentions and no no votes, item A7 passes. Council member Nusma, would you like to make a motion on item A8?
Mr. Mayor, I move item A8, Resolution 45-R-22, authorizing the interim city manager to hire participatory budgeting staff.
Second.
Council member Nusma moves item A8. Council member Reed seconds. Is there any discussion?
I just wanted to know that we can do a voice vote.
They make me nervous. Is there any discussion on item A8? Seeing none, would the clerk please call the roll? Council member Kelly.
Aye.
Council member Braithwaite.
Aye.
Council member Nguyen.
Aye.
Council member Nusma.
Aye.
Council member Burns.
Aye.
Council member Saffronin.
Aye.
Council member Revelle.
Aye.
Council member Reed.
Aye.
Council member Harakariz.
Aye.
With nine voting in favor and none voting against, item A8 passes. Council member Nusma, would you like to make a motion on item A9?
Mr. Mayor, I move item A9, Resolution 47-R-22, authorizing the interim city manager to execute a contract for the purchase of real property located at 1917 through 25 Jackson Avenue and 1413 through 25 Emerson Street in the amount of $1,675,000.
Council member Nusma moves item A9. Council member Nguyen seconds. Is there any discussion? Council member Burns.
Thank you. As I said in APW, this is a really exciting opportunity for the city. This is seven parcels near Jackson and Emerson that were previously naturally occurring affordable housing before my time in office. Over a period of time, residents were, I don't believe, I don't think the leases were resigned by the property owners. And you get a mix of information. Some people, I think, might have been paid to leave and others, I don't know the history, but they were, they, the leases weren't renewed and they left. And again, this was naturally occurring affordable housing. When I came in, when I got elected to office, I immediately moved to make sure the properties were boarded up from the inside, worked with staff to get that done. Also made sure that any, that violations for the lack of the property owner maintaining the property were cited, that violations were noticed and that violations were cited. And if need be, that that those violations will go through the local administrative hearing department. That's something that I work closely with staff on. Shortly after, we, the staff entered into a rehabilitation agreement with the property owner of these seven parcels, where she agreed after a period of time to either demo the properties or to develop them. She decided to demo them. So then you saw the fencing go up and in between that time, and this is, this is directly to Leslie Williams from from CABG, it's not that we think that people were interested in this property. They were actively reaching out to myself as well as the property owner. I met with them. They met with the Here to Stay Committee, which I talked a little bit about during APW because they're also interested in other properties in the Fifth Ward. And so I knew without a doubt that if we did not make a move on this property, that we will be looking at 90% market rate housing and 10% affordability because this would have triggered our inclusionary housing ordinance. So here's, again, the facts of this is if we do not get involved tonight, this will be sold to a developer that is going to put in 90% market rate and 10% affordable housing, either onsite or offsite, depending on what we negotiate. And so over the last several weeks, I have worked with the property owner to to negotiate a deal that gets the city site control of these parcels so that we can make sure that the affordability that was there is preserved and that we also have an opportunity to expand it. People mentioned a land trust. Again, we have a local land homeownership land trust offered by CBO, Community Partners for Affordable Housing. My colleagues up here will recall in our first closed session meeting about this item, I presented to you two letters, one from Rob Anthony from Community Partners for Affordable Housing and Reba Place Development, Keith Banks, and one from HODC. So they are partnering, they are aware of this, they are, they are in support of it, and they guided us in that letter about what is possible on this particular site. And community engagement, I want to talk a little bit about community engagement. So for those who who know me, I am a very transparent person, almost to a flaw. I do not hide my hand. I have said repeatedly throughout the campaign for office that that I thought it would be a great opportunity for the city to get a hold of these parcels. I did not hide that. After the election, I have had meetings with, we have a block club leaders meeting. Some of the the earlier guests that you listened to are from that block club leaders meeting that I've convened. That's block club leaders and neighbors from all around the Fifth Ward. It's, everyone is open. If you are in a block club or a neighborhood, part of a neighborhood group, you can join those monthly meetings. So they were aware of this. I have talked to the Wesley Neighborhood Block Club Group, which Jeff Masters here today is a part of that group. I have, Jackson does not have a block, active block club currently, and so I've talked to individuals who live on Jackson, and they are in support because most of the residents who live in Jackson that I'm in touch with are are near being displaced because of rising costs of of housing in Evanston. One that I can think of in particular reached out a few weeks ago saying that her landlord is raising the rents on her, and she asked me if if there was any affordable housing opportunities in the city. And I'll close with this.
Good question.
I'll close with this. The question that I hate to get, not because I don't want, I don't want to help, but that I feel helpless, is about housing. I get this on a regular basis. Sarah Flax, a housing and grants manager, I'm sure gets this. I'm sure we all get it to varying degrees. People calling us and saying they need affordable housing or they're going to have to leave Evanston, and I feel helpless. We do not have enough of it. And and so this is an opportunity to, again, go from what would 100% have been 90% market rate to 10% affordable to something that is affordable. We'll have a conversation with the community about what that looks like. This is an acquisition deal, but we're not going to make any decisions without a robust community engagement process and RFP process and whatever else it takes. Thank you.
Council member Reed.
Yeah, I just want to echo those statements and say that I'm in full support of the city gaining site control here. One thing I think that council member Burns didn't touch on was an appraisal, and appraisal has been done on this property. You know, it's fair market value what we're asking. I don't think anyone's getting rewarded. And, you know, we had folks come out who have, you know, stated, issued some statements of support, issued statements against it. You know, I, my family moved here to Evanston. We had someone mention they were third generation. I am a, you know, fourth generation Evanstonian. My family moved here in the 1920s from South Carolina after, in the, in an attempt to escape, you know, the racism and violent lynching that happened down there that many of us are familiar with through the late historian Doria Johnson. And my family settled here in Evanston, and we eventually settled in the 19, early, late 1920s, early, on Emerson specifically, at 1419 Emerson. My great grandmother and her, her mother and her husband and my, and my grandmother lived in that house and my great uncle and generations of my family were raised there. It was naturally occurring affordable housing for, at this point, almost a century because my great grandmother rented out the small, what's now colloquially known as the graffiti house to neighbors. And I remember Ms. Terry, who was a neighbor for years and years, and I, you know, I shared this with the council. I once had a dream of buying this property and moving back there and raising my own family right on that property. And so this is somewhat bittersweet for me to see that it's going to be demolished and that, you know, this is going away. But what, I can't think of a better way to honor that legacy of, you know, my great grandmother, someone who made sure we had affordable housing, not only for ourselves but for for neighbors, was a big piece of the community, Cecilia Stewart. And I can't see a greater way to honor that legacy of many African Americans who moved to this community, worked together to provide affordable housing for other folks who could not, you know, attain it on their own, and to provide affordable housing right on this site, more than just a single family dwelling, but, you know, upwards of, you know, 30, I won't say how many, we can maybe get there, but, you know, a minimum of 30 units is really appealing and I think really honors that legacy of my great grandmother and many others in our community who fought really hard and worked collectively to to make sure that, you know, all members of the community, particularly members of their community, the black community, had safe, affordable housing in that area. Thank you.
Council member Saffronin.
Thank you. I think there's a lot to really like about this. I do have a question for staff regarding the anticipated funding source for securing and demolishing the properties. Once the city does own them, that's a substantial expense. And what's the plan? What's the funding source? What's the estimated amount that'll cost?
Sure. Thank you, council member Saffronin, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I'm Paul Zalmasak. I serve as the Economic Development Manager. The question was, what is the source for demolition?
The, yeah, the source for the money to pay for the demolition.
Correct. So that is, it's a tailor-made, it's a TIF. We would recommend TIF. That's TIF's tailor-made for that.
Okay. So this would come, this would be TIF dollars? That's what you would anticipate that would be used for securing and demolishing the property?
Yes, that's what we recommend. And there's two ways to demolish it, is a traditional wrecking or a deconstruction.
Okay. That's my only question. Thank you.
All right, you're welcome.
Council member Kelly, followed by Nusma.
Thank you. I also, I agree. I, as I stated earlier, I very much love the idea of the city purchasing property in order to ensure affordability and perpetuity. I have, I have several questions, so I wanted to preface with that. So there was some question as to when the appraisal was done. Do you know, Mr. Zalmasak?
Thank you. I can literally give you the date. It's dated June 1st, 2022.
Thank you. And can you, so the, how this is, how we're porting money from the West End to the Fifth Ward and also the the TIF money that you referenced in response to Alderman Saffronin, is that West End TIF money or Fifth Ward TIF?
Correct. So the way it's proposed tonight, we have an affordable housing fund in TIF. The TIF that we're referencing is the West Evanston TIF because we know how much money is in that TIF. There's 4.1 million dollars. The the funds for the five-fifths TIF have not flowed into that that TIF yet. That will happen in the fall, in the second collection, or in September, when the second collection is is made from Cook County. So at that point, we'll have a better understanding of what that TIF will generate. So we can't make any decisions tonight about porting. I mean, it's, by the way, porting is when you take an adjacent, money from an adjacent TIF and bring it into the existing TIF. So we haven't made a decision as a, as a community if that's what will happen, but.
But you're proposing porting from the West End TIF, correct? Because they're Congress, aren't we taking money?
This project, this property is in the West Evanston TIF.
I see. So it's an overlapping.
Is it not? Am I mistaken on that?
This is the, this is in the five-fifths TIF.
If this is in the, I apologize. If this is in the five-fifths TIF, then we would have to, we would have to pour from the West Evanston TIF until the money flows into the West, into the five-fifths TIF.
Okay. Because it's, so I understand, right? So for the first year, there's some increment, you're not increment rich, so would that money then be returned then upon?
Right. You'd make that agreement now and then that would be a simple accounting maneuver just with, with the finance department.
Okay. So that would return then to the West End TIF?
Yes.
And then how about to the Affordable Housing Fund, the same?
The same thing could happen with the Affordable Housing Fund if the council.
I mean, those are the sort of things I would like to see in this resolution. I think that a lot of people, there's a lot that I think would be great if it were stipulated. Again, love the concept, but also do we know, maybe Alderman Burns, you can speak to it, what is this for, to build, to build wealth? Is this for ownership, affordable ownership, or for rental? What is the, what are you thinking?
This is for site control.
No, I understand. I love the idea of site control, but we want to know for what is really important because I support it. But I think the community also wants, for the sake of transparency and trust, is there is there any right now idea whether it's going to be for ownership or for rental?
Again, I'm not going to make that decision on my own. The only thing I'm comfortable doing today is getting site control in an area that would have been 90% market rate and 10% affordable, and then we can have that discussion.
Okay, so in terms of percentages, do we have any idea on that yet either? Like what percent, what would be the ratio of affordability?
I'm not going to make that call myself.
Well, I think that's part of the issue, though. I think that discussion really needs to happen. I think people need some assurance and trust that going forward, we are going to have a certain percent of, a ratio of affordability that the community is interested in, as well as knowing that the funds will be returned to the West End TIF or to the Affordable Housing Fund. I think all these things, I think people will support that. Again, I love the concept of it, but I think there's a lot of missing pieces here that could be easily stated and stipulated in the resolution. So like that, like the ratio of affordability, whether it's going to be for ownership building wealth or for rental, or, you know, what we're going to do, you know, once the increment funds do flow into the Fifth Ward TIF, if that'll be returned. I think there's just many questions, and I could support it, but I think we, these really should be stipulated. There should be a meeting and then stipulated if this is, I think, you know, when you move in concert with the community, things work out so much better. When you move in partnership with the neighbors, then we're going to get a successful project. So that's what I would ask, that these items be discussed with the community and then stipulated. I think there's no reason that that can't happen or could not have happened. Thank you.
I just want to quickly say they will happen, and we did engage community in making this decision, and we will continue to.
So the next speakers are Councilmembers Nusma, followed by Wynn, and then Braithwaite.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I do fully support this project for reasons which have already been stated. I had a quick question for Mr. Zalmasak regarding the potential cost of either deconstruction or demolition. Do we know ballpark, how much those options would be?
Yes, Councilmember Nusma. We early on got a quote from a traditional wrecking company. That cost was somewhere in the range of $100,000. It was $98,200. And the Evanston Rebuilding Warehouse, local company, they have given us a range, just based on kind of a windshield survey of the sites, of somewhere between $200,000 and $400,000. They need to access the property. They have not been able to do so because the owner would like for the property to be under contract before somebody accesses it, so...
So you'll be coming back to us for approval of that decision, whichever way?
Right, that number exceeds any amount that staff could approve without council approval, so we would return for approval to do that.
Right. And as part of this, the fire department is going to use the properties for some training?
Yes, and our internal discussions, Chief Pollock indicated that it would be very helpful for the fire department to have some real-life training in the facility. There would not be any fire taking place. They would do other, because of the condition of the building, they would use smoke and other things to simulate fire, but not actually burn things.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Councilmember Wynn, followed by Braithwaite.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I am also strongly in favor of this, and I think that this is similar to what we have done with Lot 1, which is the relatively unused, actually very seriously unused, city parking lot at the south end of Hinman. It's a city-owned asset, which we are going to have a significant number of affordable units on, affordable units the size that we know we need in Evanston, which we never get from the new developments that occur, because they don't build three-bedroom units anymore. So this is another example of the city acquiring property with the instance of Lot 1. We owned it, but realized it was unused. But this is how we are able to design and describe the type of size of units that we do need. With respect to Lot 1, we weren't certain what the percentage would be until we went out and got the responses to the request for proposal. But there was no question that the numbers are significantly more than would ever occur, as you've described, Councilmember Burns, if it were private development. And so this is the best way that I've known in my time here on the council, that we can make some significant headway on family units and units the size that are needed in our community.
Councilmember Braithwaite.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I don't really think there's anything new I could add to this conversation, other than restating that, you know, we often talk about affordable housing. We've been doing it for years. And here you see a large investment on the city of Evanston and assuring that that area of town, there's going to be affordable housing. I shared at AP&amp;W that the day after District 65 made the announcement of restoring the school to the Fifth Ward, I received a phone call from a realtor asking if it's true and that there are people that are ready to move into the area. So that is a fact, and the fact that you've heard from Alderman Burns, and we still have some conversation, that there will be more community meetings to hear. So I appreciate the fact that you're not throwing out ideas and you're sticking to your word that there will be additional meetings. So I'm ready to vote on this and move forward. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Seeing as no one who has not yet spoken is requesting to speak, we'll go back to folks who are requesting to speak a second time, beginning with Councilmember Reed with a minute 55 left.
Is there anyone other than me signed up?
I mean, both you and Councilmember Kelly have asked to speak for a second time.
I'll allow Councilmember Kelly to go first.
Councilmember Kelly, do you want to go first?
No.
Councilmember Reed with 1 minute 55 left.
Then I, done with my time.
All right. Councilmember Kelly with 2:15 left.
So just on a personal note, I'd like to say that I hope, and I think, Councilmember Burns, you expressed also an interest in this, that as everybody knows, we have many affordable units that are sunsetting, and they're going to lose their affordability that I hope, personally, I hope that we will have a large number of affordable units that are affordable in perpetuity, either through a community land trust or through a LEC co-ops, limited equity cooperative buildings. I just don't want to see more developments going up where the affordability is lost. Also, and I think, but again, it's up to the community to decide, but I certainly hope that we will be moving in the direction of affordable units that are affordable forever. Thank you.
Seeing that no one is requesting to speak for a first or second time, we'll go to Councilmember Reed, with whom no one should ever play a game of chicken, with 1 minute and 55 seconds left.
I'll just say, I hope to see a nine councilmember vote on this. I think all of the concerns that Councilmember Kelly has raised, I think, can be addressed. This is not the place to address those concerns. I am fully supportive of addressing those concerns, and the first thing is to get site control. And so let's show the Black community of Evanston, the Fifth Ward of Evanston, that we're ready to do something different, and we're ready to make sure that affordability is put on the forefront, and we're willing to put our money where our mouth is for the first time, because I can say, anyone who's complaining about this and folks who have shared public comment, you know, about how their neighborhood is changing, name a time where the city has spent this much money to gain site control of this large, of a parcel of land in the Fifth Ward, and then tell me if we aren't doing something different and if we aren't putting our money where our mouth is. That's all.
Seeing that no one else is requesting to speak, would the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Kelly?
No.
Councilmember Braithwaite?
Aye.
Councilmember Wynn?
Aye.
Councilmember Nusma?
Aye.
Councilmember Burns?
Aye.
Councilmember Suffertin?
Aye.
Councilmember Revel?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Herodocides?
Aye.
With eight voting in favor and one voting against, Item A9 passes. Councilmember Nusma, would you like to make a motion on Item A10?
Mr. Mayor, I move Item A10, Resolution 44-R-22, authorizing the settlement and release of all claims in Ronald Loudon Jr. versus the City of Evanston et al.
Second. Councilmember Nusma moves Item A10. I believe Councilmember Reed seconded. Is there any discussion? Councilmember Reed.
Yeah, I just pulled this off because I'm going to be voting no. This case raises something that I think Evanstonians should be concerned about, and I want to first make clear to the officers and the police department involved in this case. I'm not saying anybody did anything that was against, the rules are wrong, but what I'm saying is that our system that generally allows for confidential informants to be compensated by the city to make claims against their neighbors in a process that is not allowed to be made transparent in the courts, particularly for cases that do not involve the direct threat of the confidential informant in their life, I think this is akin to our FISA courts at the federal level, and it's a very concerning system that not just Evanston is using, but communities across our nation are using confidential informants who are paid by the city to make claims against neighbors. It's a bad system. I think we need to look at it. This lawsuit should really make us think about that system, and so I'm voting no.
Seeing no further discussion, would the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Kelly? Councilmember Braithwaite?
Aye.
Councilmember Wynn?
Aye.
Councilmember Nusma?
Aye.
Councilmember Burns?
Aye.
Councilmember Suffertin?
Aye.
Councilmember Revel?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Herodocides?
Aye.
With nine voting in favor and none voting against, Item A10 passes. Councilmember Burns, would you like to make a motion on Item P4?
Ordinance 34-222, amending Title IV, Chapter 14, Design and Project Review, Dapper of the City Code.
Is there a second? Councilmember Burns moves Item P4. Councilmember Wynn, seconds. Is there any discussion? Councilmember Suffertin.
Yeah, I'd like to move to table this to the second meeting in July. There's some misunderstanding about what the intent is. The intent is to broaden opportunities for public engagement around projects. I think it's probably imperative to spend some time making that clear and to clean up some of the questions. So that's my motion, that we table this to the second meeting in July.
Second. Councilmember Suffertin moves to table Item P4 to the second meeting in July, which I think is July 25th. Councilmember, I think, Reed seconded. Is that correct? Is there any discussion on the motion to table? Is that a light? Councilmember Nusma? Okay. See no discussion? Would the clerk please call the roll on the motion to table?
Councilmember Kelly?
Aye.
Councilmember Braithwaite?
Aye.
Councilmember Wynn?
Aye.
Councilmember Nusma?
Aye.
Councilmember Burns?
Aye.
Councilmember Suffertin?
Aye.
Councilmember Revel?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Herodocides?
Aye.
With nine voting in favor and none voting against, the motion carries, and this item will be on the July 25th agenda for the City Council of Evanston. This brings us to Item H1. Councilmember Revel, would you care to make a motion on Item H1?
I'm, uh...
Oh, no, I'm sorry.
Yeah, Human Services.
Yeah, that's totally wrong. Councilmember Reed, would you care to make a motion on Item H1?
I move Item H1, Ordinance 46022, deleting Title, oh, actually, at this point, it's no longer doing that, but I move Ordinance 46022.
Second.
Councilmember Reed moves Item H1. Councilmember Nusma, seconds. Is there any discussion? Councilmember Reed.
Yeah, I'm going to, I'm going to move to table this. First, I want to, very quickly, this is the first ordinance appearing on a council agenda that was a part of a package of ordinances that seek to address issues of gender equality, address issues of constitutionality of laws, and really look at issues that will reduce the number of opportunities for negative interactions with law enforcement. I don't think, this, again, this is the first of a number individually. I don't think that they are groundbreaking, but I think collectively, they represent a change in the way that we approach at least some aspects of policing. This particular ordinance is about burglars' tools. This would delete our ordinance that says that, quote-unquote, burglars' tools, the possession of, as I said, burglars' tools are banned in the City of Evanston. The question is, what is a burglar's tool? There are tools that can be used in the commission of a burglary. This was moved through Human Services. There was an amendment, the Law Department found that our ordinance as-is, is in fact, has been found in violation of the law, and a similar ordinance was struck down previously. The question is, can we have a version of this ordinance that mirrors the state law, which does not ban the possession, the mere possession of tools that can be used in the commission of a burglary, but it requires that those tools are actually used in the commission of a burglary or with the intent of a burglary? And so what I am seeking, and so what is before us is not a complete striking, but a mirroring of the state language and making it a fine. I have a concern, and this is why I'm asking to hold this, that a municipality is not actually able to regulate a felony. This would take what is a felony charge at the state and make it a ticketable offense here at the city, and I'm perfectly happy to do that, as long as we are able to do that. I'm not looking to replace an unlawful ordinance with another unlawful ordinance. And in fact, if we can create municipal tickets for felonies that we can charge folks with and move them through an alternative system, this could have huge ramifications for criminal justice reform across our state, but I'd like to be sure that that is true. And so I just want the, I want to hold this and have the Law Department maybe work with, Nick, what is the firm that, Elrod Friedman, to just double-check and see if, or whoever Nick sees fit, to see if they also agree that the city has the ability to regulate what is a state felony charge as a ticketable offense locally, and I'd be happy to do that. I just want to make sure we can, and I appreciate, I think Councilmember Herodocides made the amendment to try to make that mirroring, but I just want to make sure we can do it, and if we can, I'm happy to support it. It achieves the goal that I wanted to achieve. If we can't do it, we still would have to strike this down based on court decisions. Thank you.
So was that a motion to table or a motion to hold?
Well, I see someone has a light on, so I guess I'll allow, not allow, but I will hold the, hold, I will hold the tabling, or the holding until everyone has a chance to speak.
That was just a preamble to your intent to make a motion later. All right. Councilmember Suffertin.
Thank you. I guess, in light of that, this is a question for Council Cummings. Elrod Friedman's not going to do that for free. How does that work in terms of how we pay for that?
Good evening, Mayor, members of the city council, city clerk, Nicholas Cummings, Corporation Council. So anytime we engage an outside law firm to do this kind of research for us, they do charge us an hourly rate. We are a fully-staffed law department, although blessings to Alexandra Ruggie, who will be going on maternity leave on Wednesday. But otherwise, we are a fully-staffed law department. Assistant City Attorney Mari Johnson did prepare a memo for Human Services, and just to be clear, the city doesn't have the authority to create a felony. So we can't, we can't say this particular action is a felony, but what we can do is mirror the state law to be a city ordinance, is what is proposed in this particular amendment.
Okay, but what's your plan here, that we're going to engage an outside law firm to...
Yeah, I just want to get, I mean, this is a really huge, you know, change. If we can regulate felonies as municipal ordinance charges, that has huge ramifications for criminal justice reform across the state, and I just want to be sure, you know, I want to get a just second opinion to make sure that we have done our due diligence to ensure that's what we can do. So if that's the case, we can move forward with other measures that accomplish a similar goal.
Okay. But our fully-staffed law department is capable of undertaking this in-house, is that?
I would say yes, however, if the will of the council is for me to spend taxpayer dollars to engage a law department...
We're tabling this right now anyway, right? Well, I mean, if we're not interested in double-checking to make sure that we can actually do this, I'm fine just passing it as-is, and there'll be a bunch of referrals tonight that regulate some felony charges at the state as municipal charges to allow. As the police department said, they want this as a tool so they can choose when, you know, it's appropriate to charge someone with a municipal charge rather than a felony, as Chief Eddington expressed in one case. There was a young man who would have been charged with a felony, was charged with the local code violation, and it allowed that person to have a, no, a better shot at living a full life. And so if we can do this, I'm ecstatic to do it, but if we can't, I just want to make sure that we're not setting ourselves up for failure.
Okay.
And I just want a second opinion. You know, we've had the Law Department look at it. I just think it's important to get a, you know, I trust the Law Department. I think their research on this is good, but I think if something as big and as new as this should just have a second set of eyes.
Okay, but the motion right now is to table this, correct? Or hold it? Okay.
All right. Well, just to be, just in the interest of pedantic chair stuff, the motion now is to pass it. Kind of illusion was made that pretty soon there's going to be a motion to hold it or table it or something. Before we get there, though, I think a lot of people, all of a sudden, are interested in participating in this discussion. So next is Councilmember Revel, followed by Braithwaite, followed by Burns.
Well, I guess I'm a little confused about, if there's a state law that is in place and we're just trying to mirror the state law, do we, do we need to have our own burglar tool ordinance? I guess I'm, I'm starting to get confused.
So when this matter came before Human Services, and I guess I could let Councilmember Reed explain this, but that was the original intent, was to remove the code. And then eventually it became an amendment to mirror the state law so that there could be alternatives. I mean, we have an alternatives-to-arrest program here in Evanston, and so this would be one of those alternatives. Instead of arresting someone for a felony, we have city ordinances in place that will allow someone to be charged a fine for, you know, what would essentially be a felony act.
So our local ordinance would supersede the state law in terms of what we would do with somebody... with somebody who was found with a burglar tool?
No. That would be, that would be the discretion of the arresting and investigating officers on which to charge. They could, if I was Chief Eddington, I would say they could do the long-form charge or the short-form charge. Long-form charge being, you know, what goes to the state's attorney versus what goes to administrative hearings.
Councilmember Braithwaite, followed by Burns.
I wish I had my notes from the Human Services meeting. I don't recall this getting a lot of support in Human Services. I do recall the conversation in reference to alternatives to arrest. I have to be honest, I don't recall Chief Eddington asking for this change to give him more tools and resources. I'm, I'm ready to vote, and unfortunately, I am not in support of this big idea, to be honest.
Councilmember Burns.
I was just going to say that I am also interested, not necessarily in outside legal counsel, but just doing a double-check on that question, because I think it would have really broad implications. And similar to Councilmember Reed, looking forward to it being true, but without, you know, going into detail, it just, it doesn't seem like it is the case. So again, I'm not, don't necessarily think we need outside legal counsel, but I would support a hold to, to further review that, that legal question.
Seeing that no one else is asking to speak for the first time, we go back to Councilmember Reed, who has a minute and a half left.
Yeah, I just want to note for Councilmember Braithwaite, for edification, you did leave early that meeting and totally understandable, so that may be why you don't remember the full conversation, but, in fact, this came for two discussions, but Chief Eddington, if you want, I mean, Chief Eddington did indicate that they've used the charge that's currently on the books to, as an alternative to arrest, and Chief Eddington did want to keep a version. I mean, he's nodding yes, so that's for your own edification, Councilmember, or Councilmember Braithwaite. My goal originally was just to eliminate the law. I think, as Councilmember Revel stated, there is a state charge. I am, I'm personally morally fine with if someone attempts to break into someone's house, charging them in the way the state would charge them. I think that's a fairly serious offense to break into someone's house. I don't know if anyone here has ever had the house broken into. I haven't personally, but it's, I can imagine it's a fairly scary thing to have someone break into your house, and I think that the state charge on this is fine, and I, again, I would hope that we can do this. And so I guess I'm also supportive of if Nick's team feels like they're going to produce something different than they already produced. They did their research, and I think it's good research. I just think this is an untested area. This is something, you know, that has not been, you know, really exercised before, and that's why I think outside counsel would, would be helpful.
So, just want to flag your time, this is coming down, so if you want to make a motion...
Yeah, I'm just wrapping up now. If we're not, if we're not moving toward outside counsel, I'm happy to just, just strike it, as I think we originally should, and just have the state code prevail, which is a felony. So if there's support, and we, I want to be clear, no matter what, we have to change something, because the law as it is on the books was found unlawful. So we have to either strike it or mirror the state language. And if we don't strike it or mirror the state language, you know, those really are only two options. So are folks supportive of striking it? Because that's what I'd like to do, if we just want to strike it and let the state charges prevail. So I move to amend this, to just strike the language and allow the state charges to prevail.
Okay, so Councilmember Reed moves to amend item P, no, Daniel, come on. H1. So as to simply strike the, any reference to a burglar tool offense from the city code. Councilmember Revel seconds. Councilmember Reed, you're not going to like this, but I'm going to ask you to send me an email explaining that in writing.
It's a striking. There's no language. It's just literally, I mean, okay, I will send you an email.
Thank you. The council will stand at ease for a few moments while Councilmember Reed reduces his motion to write in.
Did I even write that right? I didn't.
What's the motion on the floor, Speaker?
While the motion is being reduced to writing, could I ask interim City Manager Kelly Ganderzky to opine?
Yeah, so just to answer Councilmember Braithwaite's question, that's exactly the point. I wanted to make sure I had it in writing, so we knew exactly what we're voting on. So stay tuned for that. In the meantime, Councilmember Newsma is recognized to ask a question of staff.
Yes, I would like to ask interim City Manager Kelly Ganderzky to opine on the potential impact of this, of this motion, should it move forward.
Good evening, members of City Council, Kelly Ganderzky. I was former supervisor of the branch courts for the city of Chicago, for the misdemeanor courtrooms and state court. And what I can tell you is, when you have a code ordinance under a city code, municipal code, you have two alternatives. You can always arrest under the municipal code, but you don't have to. The alternative is, you can issue a ticket, and that ticket can go to administrative hearings, or there can be some sort of alternative. If you eliminate the ordinance altogether, the risk you're running is eliminating that option for alternative prosecution, like through our administrative hearing process, and only then will the officers be able to arrest under the state code, and that could be a felony charge. So you're actually creating less avenues for restorative justice by eliminating the ordinance. I just want to make sure the council's aware of that.
Can you say the last part again?
So if you eliminate the city code altogether, the only alternative in a case where an officer needs to make an arrest for such a crime would be the state code, which could include a felony charge. So there would not be an alternative. You'd have to be arrested under the state statute, fingerprinted, taken to SCOKI, and now you have a record. The alternative is, under an ordinance, you can receive a ticket and go to administrative hearings.
If it's state law, it's all or nothing.
Yes.
If it's, there's a city code, we would have the ability...
Flexibility.
We have flexibility to pursue a lesser intervention.
Correct.
So I guess I would ask...
Hold on, one, one, just one second. So is, is Council, is Councilmember Braithwaite seeking recognition to speak?
Just a moment, and I guess I would ask...
So four minutes and 25 seconds left, Councilmember Braithwaite.
If they won't take this long, I'm just... Nick, just after hearing that from our city manager and your notes, are you in agreement with that? Because if you are, then for me, it doesn't make sense to have to go back to get a third party to hear that again. So I just want to confirm.
Yes, I'd be in agreement with that statement in terms of the alternatives, and also I'm pretty confident in the city's ability to, to write an ordinance like this. The only thing that we can't do is write an ordinance that's inconsistent with state law. And so this proposal in the packet mirrors, and that's what actually passed out of committee, it mirrors the language in state law, except it mandates a fine of $300 to $750, as opposed to incarceration.
Thank you.
So, so just, so the motion on the floor, which was made by Councilmember Reed and seconded by Councilmember Revel, which I'm emailing to everybody right now, is to amend H1, so that instead of doing what the packet says it does, instead it simply strikes Title 9, Chapter 5, Section 2 of the city code. So that's, that's the motion on the floor, is to amend this so that it does that instead. Do you have a point of information, Councilmember?
Yeah, yeah, point of information. So as, we have two folks who were former prosecutors here. Does the state's attorney's office not have the independent authority with looking at the facts of a case to make, bring their own charges? So even if someone was charged under the local ordinance, you know, the local ordinance, they would all, I mean, they're breaking into somebody's house. That's what we're talking about here. And so wouldn't the, the state's attorney also have the ability?
Wouldn't the state's attorney also have the ability to bring the felony charges to the state, even if we've only charged the local ordinance violation?
So, the local ordinance would not go to the state's attorney. The felony charge would go to the state's attorney for felony review, for them to determine that there was sufficient evidence to move forward with the felony. In my experience, felony review says no, you usually end up with a very bad misdemeanor that you have a hard time trying to prove. So alternatively, you could have an ordinance ticket, which by preponderance of the evidence, you can determine if someone committed the violation, as opposed to beyond reasonable doubt in a criminal courtroom.
All right. I, I, I am willing to, if, I support where also where Revel was in just eliminating this code altogether. If that's where you still are, if you've moved away from that, that's fine, but if we are going to adopt this, right, and, and the major concern is creating these alternatives, then we're going to have some, there are going to be more measures coming before us that create the same avenue of alternatives for arrest.
Okay, so let's, let's go to Councilmember Kelly, who has not yet spoken.
I just wondered if Chief Eddington would be interested in commenting on this, from your perspective? If that's all right, I'm sorry to bother you with this request, but I thought maybe you could shed a little light on...
Good evening, Your Honor, members of the council and city manager. Councilmember Kelly, I'll be very brief. I, I think what the Police Department has done, demonstrated, is requesting, is to continue to have the option when to apply a felony charge and when to take a route that allows for some alternatives of to arrest to occur. When we discussed this at the Human Services Committee meeting, we talked about, two individuals were charged under this. One was a young man, went to Director Thompson's programs and successfully completed them. I think that's what you want. At least that's been the attitude projected me both times I've been chief, that you're looking for ways to reduce the stigmatization of arrest and look for ways, alternatives to arrest, to address these issues. And so this gives us another option where we're not saddling somebody with the felony. And, and that's, I think that's what you want, and that's what, that's how we've applied it. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. So now, would the clerk please call the roll? And just to be clear, on the amendment that was made that changes H1, so instead H1 strikes Title 9, Chapter 5, Section 2 of the city...
I withdraw that motion. I'm seeing thumbs down and things, so...
All right, so Councilmember Reed withdraws that motion.
And, you know, we'll, we'll vote on, again, I'm happy to see this. This is, I've made this referral to eliminate this unconstitutional law. We are eliminating the unconstitutional law.
So you withdraw the motion. Are you replacing with a motion?
With the original motion, I'm going back to the...
So there's no, that motion was already made? So you're...
Right, yeah.
Okay. So in that case, the motion on the table then is unamended H1, just regular old H1 in the, in, oh boy, everyone's light goes on. So the motion on the table still is H1, without amendment, but there's some folks who want to speak. So seeing that no one is asking to speak for the first time, we'll go to Councilmember Kelly with four minutes and 45 seconds left. Councilmember Burns.
Thank you. I just want to be clear that, that, you know, Councilmember Reed has said that the current ordinance, if I'm understanding this correctly, is not constitutional. So is that a correct or not? That a change must be made?
So...
I think people are getting a little confused. I just want to re-center us if possible. The existing code, even if we feel it's been applied fairly and created opportunities for restorative justice and diversion, is not constitutional.
So the current code, the current code was, was very similar to a Chicago ordinance that was determined to be unconstitutional in 1970. So yes, if someone was ticketed for this offense and they challenged it, saying that they were unlawfully ticketed, they would be right, and, because the, the same language was found to be unconstitutional in Chicago. So I don't, I don't want us to get into the, the mode that something is automatic, like if challenged, yes, it's going to get thrown out because a similar ordinance has been found to be unconstitutional. The amendment that's before the council right now brings it in line with being constitutional, because it mirrors the state code. That was the recommendation from internal discussions with the Police Department, that was based upon research from Assistant City Attorney Johnson, and the debate by the Human Services Committee. So the amendment before you guys right now is making it constitutional and enforceable and mirrors the state law.
And, and the ticket option, again, with this current constitutional version, allows our Evanston Police Department to do the diversion work that Chief Eddington mentioned. And I'm not saying that, it's more so from my colleagues, because I'm just reading the room, I think people are a little confused. So we need to pass this. If you want the diversion and you want to be in line with the Constitution, we need to pass it. I just want to make sure. Okay. Thank you.
And just, just for the sake of my own, making sure I've not lost my own mind, you had spoken to a former member, you talked about how you weren't sure if we needed to have outside counsel, but you wanted it looked at again. So we'll go then to, next will be Councilmember Kelly with 4:45 left, and after her will be Newsma. Councilmember Newsma?
And I also want to clarify here, we're talking about possession of burglars' tools. We're not talking about burglary.
Correct.
Right? So I just want to make that distinction. Okay.
Possession of the tools with intent to burgle. It's key that it has to be with the intent to burgle.
Thank you.
Yes, there's been a lot of discussion about that in my household in recent weeks. So, no one else's lights are on, the, H1 has not been amended, so on the floor is the original motion to pass Ordinance 46-022, as it appears in your packet, unamended. Would the clerk please call the roll on that?
Councilmember Kelly?
Aye.
Councilmember Braithwaite?
Aye.
Councilmember Wynn?
Aye.
Councilmember Newsma?
Aye.
Councilmember Burns?
Aye.
Councilmember Sefredin?
Aye.
Councilmember Revel?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Harukariz?
Aye.
With eight voting in favor and one voting against, item H1 passes.
Your vote.
Council, with nine voting in favor, some pronounced differently than others, and none voting against, item H1 passes. And we'll be back here in two weeks, where we can do this again. Councilmember Reed, would you care to make a motion on item H2?
Yeah, just for Evanston now, unanimous vote on burglars' tools. Ordinance 19022, amending portions of the city code 9520, noises prohibited, and city code 831, enumeration of particular nuisances. So moved.
Councilmember Reed moves item H2. Councilmember Revel seconds. Any discussion? Councilmember Revel.
Well, despite the fact that this, these amendments have been through multiple discussions, there is the need to do further amendments to deal with a number of restaurants and similar entities that have outdoor patios and such where they play music, and we haven't, so we need to make, we need to provide for how to handle their noise levels. So I, I'm happy to just move right away to table this to the first meeting in August.
Second.
Second.
Councilmember Revel moves to table item H2 to the first meeting in August, which I think is also the only meeting in August. Councilmember Reed seconds. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, would the clerk please call the roll on the motion to table?
Councilmember Kelly?
Aye.
Councilmember Braithwaite?
Aye.
Councilmember Wynn?
Aye.
Councilmember Newsma?
Aye.
Councilmember Burns?
Aye.
Councilmember Sefredin?
Aye.
Councilmember Revel?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Harukariz?
Aye.
With nine voting in favor and none voting against, the motion carries, and this item will be on our agenda in the first, and again, I think only, meeting in August. Councilmember Revel, would you care to make a motion on item R1?
I move approval of resolution 39-R. I move approval of resolution 39-R-22, instructing the city clerk to submit for the November 8th, 2022 ballot, a referendum to use ranked choice voting in Evanston.
Councilmember Revelle moves item R1. Councilmember Wynn seconds. Is there any discussion? Councilmember Reed.
All right. So you can let the second light go and then throw me in the line.
Councilmember Burns.
Yeah, I spoke to Mayor Bis and, and Councilmember Hedikatis about this. At the last meeting, I should have asked if we could move it to July because my ward meeting is not till the 30th. And so I have not been able to have this discussion with the ward, but I'm looking forward to it. Additionally, we, I'm trying to find his name now. I've also been in contact with a professor out of San Francisco, Jason McDaniel, who has done a lot of research on ranked choice voting. He has agreed to attend, what was it, to July?
Yeah, I was going to announce that.
Okay, well, I'll let you, I'll let you announce it. You set it up, so. But, but I would ask that, again, we table this until July so I could have a ward meeting and, and then there's an extra bonus that comes with it as well that Councilmember Reed will describe.
So just, as I understood it, your plan was to hold it? Is this a motion to table or a motion to hold?
Or hold, I'm sorry. Hold.
All right. So Councilmember Burns moves to hold item R1. Is there a second?
He didn't move to hold it. He said his intention is to hold.
Oh, sorry. Councilmember Burns states his intention that will be executed later. Council, so we'll, we'll go to the Lot Department first, and then we'll go to Councilmember Reed, followed by Newsma.
I just wanted to clarify, if you're intending to just hold it for the July 11th meeting or did you want it for, okay. Because there is a tight timetable. I think it needs to be passed by some date in August, if I'm not mistaken, in order for it to be on the ballot.
That's why I mentioned it. So for our discussion, I'd said, you know, I think holding it until July 11th is fine as long as the agreement is that that's when the vote occurs. And so I thought executing a hold as opposed to a table today just is an extra protection to ensure that this, the vote can occur next time. Councilmember Reed.
Yeah, thank you. I, I want to, we'll have the discussion, as Councilmember Burns mentioned, myself and a couple other councilmembers, Councilmember Kelly as well, met with Professor Jason McDaniel from the University of San Francisco, who is one of the leading researchers and almost outside of the advocacy groups, the leading researcher on ranked choice voting. And so we're looking to have him come and speak for 10 minutes about his research, and he's a very neutral presenter that just presents the facts, and I think folks will appreciate his research. But I do want to raise a few things for both the community and for this committee to ponder as we approach the 11th. When it comes to election reform, as my colleague from the Second Ward always says, what problem are we trying to solve? And for me, a good election reform, the problem that you are trying to solve is to increase the suffrage, to increase the franchise, to increase voter turnout. And from what I have seen, there are no studies that demonstrate ranked choice voting increases voter turnout. You know, some research actually shows that ranked choice voting decreases election, election participation, especially amongst low propensity voters, which are low-income folks, people of color, young folks. And, you know, some of this may peter out over time, but certainly the research shows that in the first few elections, there's decreased, and there certainly isn't increased. The second thing that I've heard folks say is that ranked choice voting will save the city money, will save taxpayers' money. Implementing ranked choice voting will not create a dime of cost savings for Evanstonians. And I just want to note, if anyone disagrees with anything that I am saying here, please correct the record and show your, your evidence. But what I think is governments need to spend more money on elections, not less. Reform bills that have shown to be successful in the metric of expanding the franchise, increasing voter turnout, are things like automatic voter registration. Costs more money, doesn't save money. Mail-in voting, drop boxes, early voting, all of those reforms have been shown to increase voter turnout in some way, and they cost more money. Um, you know, the other thing is candidate campaigns will realize reduced spending, election spending. Well, there are some of us who participated in primaries, there are some of us who did not participate in primaries. And if you look across the board, really the metric was, was the race contested or not? Whether you participated in the primary or not, on average, the automatic campaigns spent roughly, the winning campaigns spent roughly the same amount. Elimination, and, and I believe that elimination of a primary will mean less resident education and engagement in local election, elections. It was mentioned earlier that, you know, ranked choice voting will help ensure that no candidate is elected with a plurality and only a majority. No one sitting on this dais has been elected with anything less than 50% plus of the vote. Our elections in Evanston since reform back in the 1990s has created a primary system which ensures almost definitely that the winning candidate, and it has ensured over the last three decades, that whoever sits on this dais gets over 50% of the vote. So if that's the problem that ranked choice voting is trying to solve, it's also not solving that. So I really ask, what problem are we trying to solve? If we are trying to moderate our elections or make our council more centrist, the way that you do that is by getting out and knocking on doors and sharing your vision. Our current system is the most, is one of, in my opinion, the most democratic system because it ensures that candidate, that, that voters have more time to speak with candidates, they get to narrow the field down to two. There's research in that Professor McDaniel will speak about, maybe briefly, but there's research that shows that with ranked choice and with all of, that, that may indicate that with ranked choice and with all of these, the choices that could be on a ranked choice ballot, that there's actually voter overload and that it becomes harder for folks to fully wrap their, their head around that. And so those are, I see, how much time do I have left?
30 seconds.
30 seconds. I would really encourage folks to look into the history of instant runoff voting and when it was first introduced in, in Illinois, it was to try to defeat Harold Washington, the first black mayor of Chicago in the 1980s, and it was officially adopted by Chicago in the 1990s. I think there are other reform that we can adopt to, to better serve the purpose of enfranchising low-income people, enfranchising people of color, young people, and it does not directly align with RCV. And I didn't get an opportunity to speak about the legal concerns.
So the, good thing we're not voting today. So, so the next, the next speaker is Councilmember Newsma.
Just going to say I have a myriad of legal concerns about this as well.
I am in support of this when we eventually do get to vote for it. I did have a question about the timing, which Council Cummings has asked. So as long as we are able to vote on this, in, in time for it to get on the November ballot, I will be satisfied. And I will also point out that we do have a lot of work to do in terms of community education so that everyone in the community knows when, if this, passes city council and the referendum does appear on the ballot, we do have a lot of work to do so that everybody in the community knows when they go to vote in November, what they are voting on here.
Since no one's asking to speak for a first time, we'll go back to Councilmember Burns with three minutes and 30 seconds left.
I was just going to say, for the 11th, if staff can also work on the budget for education, and you'll hear this from the professor who comes out and, and speaks about this, but in every place that he has, he's conducted his research, the budget that they've put towards education has not helped to, has, has not helped to-
Offset the decrease-
Offset the decrease in voter turnout. And so my strong recommendation and, and really requirement to support this is that whatever that, you know, whatever that number is adjusted for our population, et cetera, that we, we double it, if we're really serious. And so I would like staff to come back and let us know how we can fund supporting voter outreach and education around this.
Did you want to make your motion to hold now?
Yes.
So Councilmember Burns moves that we hold item R1. Councilmember Reed seconds. I think a motion to hold might not be debatable.
It is not debatable and does not require a vote.
Oh.
A motion to override the hold is what requires a vote.
Thank you. Sorry. Is there a motion to overturn the hold? Seeing none, the hold prevails, and this item will be on the July 11th agenda. This concludes our agenda for the evening, so we go to the call of the wards, beginning with Councilmember Kelly.
We have a first ward meeting this Thursday, it is virtual, and a informal conversations next Tuesday at The Graduate at 4:00 PM. Thank you.
Councilmember Braithwaite.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, I have a number of, of thank yous to give, not only to our members of council, the residents, our staff in the, in the community. Over the past several months, there have been some life-changing experiences that myself and my family has, has gone through, and it has been a deep period of reflection. And so I've had many conversations with, deep conversations with some of my peers that I've worked very closely with and some members of, of the community. And at this point, I'm, I'm sharing that July 11th will be my last public meeting. It has been a huge honor and privilege, not only to serve and represent the members of the Second Ward here on council, but being a part of some amazing decisions and meeting some incredible people along the way. I'll have more, you know, written comments later that I will address to my residents, but for the period of time that I've had an opportunity to work with the citizens here and behind this desk, it's been transformative. And I just want to thank you all very much for all that you've contributed, particularly the, the prayers and support within the last 30 days have been very meaningful. So thank you.
Well, thank you, I'm Eddie Levels. I'll, I'll have more to say in a minute, but I, I want to give everyone else a chance first. Councilmember Wynn.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My only announcement is that I will have office hours on Thursday, July 7th, at Brothers' Cave from 7:30 until 10:00 in the morning. Thank you.
Councilmember Newsma.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councilmember Braithwaite, I would like to thank you for your years of service of the community. Your announcement a minute ago, a minute ago has taken me back. I received that news with some disappointment and some apprehension of what's going to happen next, but, you know, I respect your decision as being right for you, being right for your family. You will be appearing in a council meeting again so we can, we can save some, some more comment until your last meeting, but I'm going to be sorry to see you go. Fourth Ward business, we will have a fourth ward meeting on Tuesday, July 5th, 7:00 PM at Robert Crown, and office hours Saturday, July 9th, 10:00 AM to noon at whichever coffee shop is in the rotation. I'd have to look it up.
Councilmember Burns.
Next, Fifth Ward meeting is last Thursday of this month, will hold another remote meeting. And also just wanted to thank my colleagues up here for supporting the, the land acquisition item. It is much appreciated in the community as well as I appreciate the support and the confidence. I also just want to thank Council Cummings, Paul Zalma Zach, Sarah Flax, Joanna Knighton, Angel Schnur, the block club leaders, Fifth Ward Block Clubs, Fifth Ward Block Club Leaders Group, as well as the Wesley Neighborhood Group, for your support on this project. It was a team effort, so thank you.
Councilmember Saffronin. Councilmember Revelle.
Well, just really briefly to Councilmember Braithwaite, my heart sank because you made your statement. I'm really going to miss you, but we'll, we'll talk more at the next council meeting. And just a reminder, having a seventh ward meeting this Wednesday at 7:00 PM, and we are going to be having a presentation on ranked choice voting.
Councilmember Reed.
Thank you. We have an eighth ward meeting coming up on this Thursday. This will be our first in-person meeting. It's going to be very impromptu. We're asking folks to bring chairs to an outdoor space, where we'll figure it out, we'll maybe work with some partners to get some seating, but we're looking at the new potential art park. I'll be saying, the newsletter will go out, we'll go out in the next, we'll go out as soon as my mic goes out. It'll go out tomorrow or the next day. I reminded folks about that. We'll have another meeting, but Councilmember Braithwaite, we have disagreed on a lot of issues, and we've agreed on other issues, and we've had really interesting conversations. I appreciate your work here and your lessons here on the dais, even if it doesn't seem like I'm always absorbing some of it. I have appreciated, but even more so, and I, and I'm, even more so, I appreciate your role outside of council, if that, and your, your mentorship and your calling me up sometimes randomly to say, hey, brother, when are you going to get back in school or when are you going to do whatever this is to get? And so I, I do appreciate that and, and your service, not just on council, but your service that extends far beyond this dais that will continue to occur with or without a title. And I think that's really what defines you, that work. And I think that is, is, you asked me about my legacy, I think that's going to be your legacy.
Councilmember Hara Karis.
I just want to say thank you, Peter, for your service of the city, and I'm disappointed we only got to share the, the dais here for a few months, but I'm sure we'll keep in touch. Talk.
I appreciate the point that we'll have another chance to talk about our appreciation for, for all you've done for this community, Councilmember, but I just want to, it's obvious, but just needs to be said out loud, whatever you want to say about this council, experience is not our forte. And you've brought experience, you've been so generous in sharing what you've learned during your time on this council with those of us who are new. That's meant a lot, and, and it's, it's going to be really, really, really felt after July 11th. So I'll have more to say on July 11th, but, you know, beyond thank you and our affection for all that you stand for, thanks for being able to teach us because it's real helpful. With that, Councilmember Newsma is recognized to make a motion.
Pursuant to five Illinois compiled statutes, 120/2A, I move that the city council convene into executive session to discuss agenda items regarding personnel, litigation, and establishment of reserves or settlement claims. These agenda items are permitted subjects to be considered in executive session, and are enumerated exceptions under the Open Meetings Act as set forth in 5 ILCS 120/2A, Sections C1, C11, and C12.
Second. Councilmember Newsma moves the city council resolve itself into an executive session to discuss the items he alluded to. Councilmember Wynn seconds. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, would the clerk please call the roll? Councilmember Kelly?
Aye.
Councilmember Braithwaite?
Aye.
Councilmember Wynn?
Aye.
Councilmember Newsma?
Aye.
Councilmember Burns?
Aye.
Councilmember Saffronin?
Aye.
Councilmember Revelle?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Hara Karis?
Aye.
With nine voting in favor and none voting against, the motion carries, and at 9:33 PM, the city council resolves into executive session to begin immediately in the council member library.